Welcome to Touring with the Candidates. I'm Larry Nimmer. Each of the candidates for Carpinteria City Council were given fourteen minutes to give us their guided tour of Carpinteria. The places visited and the topics discussed were entirely up to the individual candidates. So strap on your seatbelts as we begin the first of two hours of touring with the candidates.
Hi, my name is Judy Chesson. Should we go on our tour?
Okay. Okay, we're going.
As you know, that's our library. What used to be our library. I think everybody's looking forward to getting the real thing built again. There's a big difference between what we had and what we have now. Over here to the right is one of our nice improvements in Carpinteria. Our new parking lot, benches outside. I remember the old Mills Drug Store. Really looks nice now. Put a lot of time and effort, and I'm sure money into that project.
Have you been in this town awhile?
I've been here, I've been here about thirty years now. Thirty-one years to be exact. Yeah, I'm not originally from California. I'm from Milwaukee, Wisconsin, but I've been out in California longer than I've been in Wisconsin, so this is my home. Always loved Carpinteria. I raised my four girls here. Great place. Great little community. My only problem is with the stop signs, sir, as long as the old Santa Barbara stop signs used to be. Remember the ones on the freeway? How long? I think we made the Inquirer with that one.
Oh yeah?
Four-minute stop sign.
Do you know how long this one is?
No, I don't, but this one and the one down by Best Western Hotel, quite long. But it gives everybody a chance, I guess, to slow down and contemplate a few things and what's going on.
Yeah. Are we going again?
Okay, now we are going down Linden Avenue. I wanted to swing by another really nice improvement in our town. To the left of us, it's our, which I'm sure you know most people are familiar with, is our fountain. And our seating area here, right in front of Vons. Really nice improvement. But now, I'd like to take you to someplace just to show you a little contrast as far as improvements go. I think we've fallen short in a few things and it disturbs me greatly because I'm usually up around that area every weekend.
Judy, what do you do for a living?
I work at the middle school. I'm an instructional aide there with the special day class we have, working with developmentally-delayed children. And it's a new position for me and it's very exciting. For four years, I worked at Maine Elementary School, running the computer lab there. I'm an avid computer person. And, uh, parking enforcement. And also on weekends, for the last seven years, I've been working as a waitress at Carol's Restaurant. A lot of people know me from there. But I really enjoy working with the schools, working with kids. So it's incredible to see the improvement in them when we're mainstreaming these children. Disadvantaged or delayed, however you want to put it. But there, we're mainstreaming them and it's a wonderful experience for them to be in with regular classes. And I go in with all their classes and help them along with their work. Keeps you on your toes, sixth grade math.
Okay, um, so Judy, uh, do you have a computer at home?
Oh yes, I have a complete setup with a modem and a CD-ROM, a 486SX33, and that's my PIP.
What do you do with it?
I do a lot of research. I write. I have, I'm writing, I'm presently working on a fiction novel. And, you know, taking any little break I can to get on with that. And I have been published in the Santa Paula News Press, or the Santa Paula Chronicle, in the Santa Barbara News Press, and the Conservative Digest, freelance articles. But I'm trying to get my feet wet in fiction now. So... And I just put a modem in my computer. It's a great little piece of work. And I just got a CD-ROM two weeks ago. And those are wonderful too. It's amazing how much information a CD can hold. Now, I'm turning into, now, we've been through Linden Avenue and Carp Avenue and we've seen the nicer part of Carpinteria. Now, to me, this is a reality park. Reality check. This is our camper park here.
What's the name of this park?
Uh, that's all I've ever known it by, is the camper park. You say the camper park and, you know, people will know where it is. This has been a bone of contention in the city side for a long time. And I think people are losing the view of different classes of life, different segments of society. This is a low-income housing place. That, there are both Mexicans here and Caucasians here. People that can't afford, you know, much of anything else. This is reasonable rent. It's awfully crowded. And, uh, I guess the city has cleaned out some of it that have, because it was just way overcrowded. But then people like this go into the neighborhoods and crowd into the neighborhoods and small little apartments. It's been a sore spot for the community. And it just shows me the desperate need that we have in this community. For housing, we just have, had not done any building in the last several years. And I don't feel as though we're meeting the needs of the segment of community, of the segment of the community that, that really needs the housing. People that can't afford to pay a lot. And I think they've been really ignored. I'd like to see some of our money spent on upgrading things. Let's ease up on the permit process, make it easier for developers to come in here and get some, some kind of moderate building going. So we can help more than one class of society, more than one class of our community. Because not everybody in Carpinteria has a lot of money to spend on rent. There's a lot of people, for that matter, myself included, who work two jobs for a living. It's a very common thing in California.
Pause it. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. You know, I was thinking as we were going through the trailer park, there, but for the grace of God, go I. Because I came when I was in California, and I bought my home in California, it was before things really got out of hand as far as prices went. So I'm one of the people that have been fortunate enough to buy years ago, well, thirty, thirty-one years ago, and paid off my home. And that's the only reason I've been able to really stay in California. If I had to make expensive house payments, mortgage payments, or expensive rents, I wouldn't be able to live here either. You know, it's just, things have gotten so out of hand. And I think not only for the average person, but businesses. I mean, that's why so many businesses are leaving California. I mean, that's a known fact. Because in this state, we're just taxed to death. It's, you know, once a taxing body has an inch, they'll take a foot. And it's abatement districts, assessment districts, and every other kind of district they can create to generate revenue. And I think a lot of it is, uh, they could do better managing the money, you know. They could, I think it's a matter of a lot of sorting out priorities. So, pause it. No, this is not. Thanks a lot.
Okay.
I haven't been here in years.
Okay, we're rolling.
Okay, this is the Sandpiper Mobile Village. To give you an example of a little bit more contrast here, this is one of our nicer mobile home parks that a lot of senior citizens are in. And I think this is one of the parks, the last time I heard, they still don't rent to children. Or there's a certain section, I believe, in back that rents to children. In some sections in this park, you're even allowed to have a PIP, which I think is great. But it shows you the contrast. And a lot of this, a lot of these people that live here now are really concerned about taxes. In fact, I had one of the people that live here come to me the other night when I was working in the restaurant and asking me more about the so-called new mosquito abatement that, uh, they had gotten wind of. They got the card in the mail and, you know, probably didn't read it over very carefully and came in and asked me about it. So, they're quite concerned, something new on our tax bill. And, uh, you know, when you're on a fixed income and there's no raises in pay per se coming in, it makes it extremely difficult. Because when you have something else to worry about on your tax bill, you've got to cut someplace else. And invariably, a senior citizen will cut necessities, like let's skip the medicine at a dollar a pill, you know. Or let's skip, uh, a dinner out, maybe, you know. Not too many of them can afford a lot of entertainment. And they are making a lot of sacrifices and they are very concerned. It's been expressed to me that they're afraid that our taxes are going to get way out of hand here in Carpinteria with the new abatement district we have now. Because there hasn't been any on our tax bills since Proposition 13. And they're quite concerned that this is the start of a tax, taxes going up out of hand again. Pause it. In conclusion, Larry, I'd really like to have people concentrate more on the segments of our town that really need it. It's the affordable housing issue that I think it's time that we go forward with it and work on it. And I also feel that our senior citizens need to be reassured that their tax bills are not going to get out of hand with abatement districts, assessment districts, and all the other creative ways of raising taxes. Because I've heard from many of them and they are quite concerned. So let's work together to solve these problems. I feel we can do it.
Thanks a lot.
That it.
Hi, I'm Jim Trotter. Would you like to come in and take a visit?
Okay, thank you.
A little bit messy, I hope you forgive us.
Okay, indeed we do.
Here's some photos of some of my family, my wife's family.
Okay. Is this your work area here?
This is one of the areas where we work. My wife's in the office right now, working. I was out here doing some work.
Okay. Jim, uh, this is the other office?
This is where we do some work here. My wife's doing some work right now. I hope you forgive her.
Sure.
You know, it could, one week you can have one handful, another, having another. Why don't you join me on a little tour of Carpinteria there?
Okay. Okay, well, we're rolling.
Okay, this is our neighborhood.
Is there a name for this neighborhood?
Um, well, I don't know. When I first moved here to Carpinteria, gosh, over thirty years ago, this was a huge lemon orchard. And we're going to go down the street here to Eucalyptus Street, which is down about three blocks, and go by the, uh, can't think of the name right now, the oldest structure found in Carpinteria. And it's, uh, an old adobe that was built in the early eighteen hundreds. And later, oh, it must have been eighteen seventies, I believe, it was remodeled, or no, the eighteen forties, it was remodeled into a larger mansion. And then it was destroyed in a fire. And then slowly, over the years, just got hidden by debris. And then in about mid-sixties, when they were clearing this area, getting ready to build these houses, uh, it was uncovered again. And this is it up on the left here. Heath, the Heath adobe. And it's quite interesting, actually.
Can you stop your discussion?
Sure. If anybody in Carpinteria doesn't know about the Heath adobe, they should come look at it and read a little bit about the history of Carpinteria. Um, this is the original adobe. The, the mansion was built around it. It was incorporated into it. Uh, when this track was being cleared in the sixties, it was uncovered under a pile of rubble and dirt. It's been preserved by the Carpinteria Historical Society. And it's quite an interesting bit of Carpinteria's history. And it's, uh, everybody thinks Carpinteria started on the south side of the freeway, but here's a little bit of history that's actually on the north side of the freeway. When this track was originally developed, it was, like I said, all lemons. And, uh, the first pieces of property subdivided were up along Foothill.
We're back on the road?
We're back, leaving Eucalyptus Park, where the Heath adobe's located. It's a great place for kids to play. You can see all those tree trunks and play structures. As I was saying, though, when this was first being developed, uh, the first pieces sold off were along Foothill. And they were sold to those famous Dutch brothers who came here in the early sixties and started flower growing. Uh, and I remember working in Carpinteria and seeing them out there hauling rocks and clearing fields and planting flowers in open fields. And they've prospered and developed and grown in business. And then this lower piece of the lemon orchard, by the way, which used to have over a hundred low-income houses in this, in this piece of property for the migrant workers who worked in the lemon fields at the time. That was all torn out and these housing tracks were put in. We're now traveling down El Caro Lane, going up towards Sterling Park, tiny strip of a park. When this was developed, it was very nice. They put in about three or four little parks sprinkled throughout the neighborhood. Well, here's an intersection. Now, this is an older part of, uh, of the developments on this side of the freeway. These were built in the late fifties and finished out in the early sixties. Whereas the piece we just left was started in the mid-sixties. Um, this piece runs over into Linden, along Malibu here. It comes out at, uh, the school down here at the end, St. Joseph's Church. You can see some of these houses are starting to be remodeled now, going through the normal life cycle of a house. And this is Linden we're on now. Used to be the main heart of town, Linden Carp Avenue. And before the freeway was built, there was a little bit of housing, the freeway being built in the old, the mid-fifties, and actually being pushed through town. And there was a little bit of housing on this side of the freeway. I used to come up here as a teenager with my folks and visit Carpinteria. And we'd stay at the, uh, camper park. And my sister was the, um, the dean of Santa Claris High School in Ochsford, the Catholic High School. And we'd come stay in Carpinteria and go down and visit her. And right down the road here is the oldest occupied home in Carpinteria. Here comes Reuben Organista on his way home. From the phone company. It is a small town. This home right here, the yellowish home with the brown trim, is the Ogan residence, of which Ogan Road is named for. Reg Ogan still lives there. He's in his, must be in his late seventies. And, uh, they've lived there for many, many years. It's the oldest occupied home in Carpinteria. And this little piece here, Valacito Road, Valacito Road used to go all the way through Carpinteria Avenue. And on the, on the freeway, on the other side of the freeway, on the Carpinteria side, is where the community church and the women's club is. And on this side of the street, uh, freeway that is, these little homes are all built in the forties and fifties. One of the homes up here on the, we just passed on the left, was the original phone company, converted into a home.
That first home on the corner?
Yeah, second home on the corner back there. And you can see some of these are classic little homes that have been built over the years. Um, now, many of these homes wouldn't get built today because they wouldn't meet the zoning requirements or the building codes. And around the corner here, Valacito forms a horseshoe, is the first home my wife and I used to live in. This is where Barbara Boyd lived, who taught at school here for many, many years. This is where our daughter was born, the first home we owned. It was built by the McIntyre's in the fifties. They built the garage and lived in the garage while they built the rest of the house. And one of the McIntyre boys grew up and is now a fireman at the Summerlin Carpinteria Fire Department. And this little, this used to be out in the country. This used to be the furthest end to the country that Carpinteria reached, near along Valacito. It's an interesting part of town. Lutheran church on the right. Some more little homes here on the left.
Do you feel like they should be able to still build a little home?
Well, you should be able to build a home and then, and let it grow over time as your family needs. It's the only way to do it inexpensively nowadays. This home on the corner is Mr. Humphrey's home. Mr. Humphrey passed away a few years ago, but he owned the Ford dealership here in town, back in the early fifties, late forties. A lot of history spread through Carpinteria. But yes, speaking of homes, uh, the way the McIntyre's built their home is they started very small. It's all they could afford. And as the family grew, they added to it and the house grew. And it's still being occupied by families to this day. And this is forty-five years later, or fifty years later. What we're going to do here, I think, is go, maybe go up Linden Avenue to Foothill and take a look at one of the newer facilities in town that most of the community's real proud of having helped build and add to our inventory of resources that can serve our community.
Did your kids go to school in the school system here?
No, my daughter has always gone to a private school. We're very fortunate she's always been able to get a scholarship. My daughter is a very bright child. Last year, graduating from the eighth grade, she was a, uh, a national silver medal winner in Latin, a top science, history, and, uh, Latin scholar. The year before, she was the top science and math scholar. So we feel very fortunate. She's worked very hard and kept wonderful grades. And this year, she's a starting, in her freshman year of high school, she's a varsity starting volleyball player. So she's a real, real talented young lady. We're now going down Foothill, where there are lots of nurseries. Used to be all orchards and avocados, lemons. A lot of this is what protects us from growth. The fact that we have high-value agriculture keeps this property from being just growing houses. They're able to find a crop that'll actually produce an income that'll match the value of the land.
We've got about four more minutes now.
Okay, here on the right is the new Girls Incorporated facility, wonderful facility serving Carpinteria. Um, if you haven't been here to see this, I recommend everybody in the community to come by and visit. I was fortunate to be part of the fundraising effort to help build that. And now we're just going down Foothill here. And Foothill will come out down to Casitas Pass. And down through the newer part of town. Beautiful day here, Foothill's in the background after a nice rainy early October.
I guess there's some discussion of making this lot on the right corner some low-income housing.
I don't know if that's the plan. No, I don't. We're now heading down Casitas Pass Road. I know that a lot of the property here on the left has been held by the same family for several generations. And is actually in family trusts, and I understand will be protected for many years into the future and kept in agriculture. Which is a wonderful, wonderful thing that families can do that still. And it does help keep our town small and compact. And we don't see the urban sprawl or the suburban spread that many other communities have.
I guess it's a delicate balance of letting agricultural exist, but also some development here and there?
It's a fairly delicate balance, but we're very fortunate. We have some very creative agriculturalists who have been able to maintain a high crop value, which is the key to it. The land value gets, increases as urban encroachment pushes the value up. And if you can't find a way to pay the taxes and support the value of the land, it usually gets turned into subdivisions. And we've been very fortunate with some very hard-working, uh, members of the agriculture community, growing flowers, avocados, other new exotic crops, cherimoyas, things like that. Now we come down to the intersection.
We've got about two more minutes.
We'll be crossing the freeway and going right down to the old junior high, high school, middle school down there.
Okay, we're rolling again?
We're passing the middle school and by the community pool. Going down Carp Avenue. On the right is, uh, it's an old motel. And next to it, the La Mexicana Market, which used to be Scotty Martin Ford. I had the opportunity to work there in the early sixties. When we had car dealerships in the town, it was a great source of revenue for the community. Uh, we're coming up on the old, the library that's being rebuilt. And we're going to park here, maybe in front of the Torii Pine and the Lone Palm Cafe, a new addition to our community. We're standing here in the parking lot of the Lone Palm, a new establishment here in Carpinteria. And across the street behind us, you can see the Torii Pine, the famous Wardholm Torii Pine. Torii, this is the largest Torii Pine in existence. And it's kind of interesting that it's here in Carpinteria. Torii Pines are really native to much further south in Carp, in California, along the coast of San Diego, at the Torii Pine National Park down there. I remember when I was a very young boy, moved here from New York at the age of eight. I was fascinated by Torii Pine Park at the time. They would launch little, uh, homemade airplanes off the cliffs along the ocean there. And it fascinated me. And I remember moving to Carpinteria and discovering the Wardholm Torii Pine. Uh, and walking around it one day, I looked over to the corner of Linden and Carpinteria Avenue. And parked there was a nineteen thirty-eight Lincoln, with two gentlemen sitting in it discussing local politics. And ever since that, I thought Carpinteria was the perfect place to live, where people can sit out in the sun, discuss the goings-on in town, and be in a gorgeous environment.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay, bye-bye.
Hi, I'm Donna Jordan. Why don't you come right into my house?
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to give you just a, a real quick, uh, quick tour here. Of course, the obligatory painting of the Carpinteria blocks.
Okay.
And, um, it's probably befit to anybody who winds up on city council. You'll, you'll find a paper mess about anywhere you look in this house. I actually do have a workroom, but everything seems to wind up here by the telephone or on a kitchen counter. And I promised my husband someday he'll, uh, be able to get his counter back. Let me also show you where I do my other work.
Okay. And what is your other work?
I'm a reading tutor, reading specialist. And I work with, uh, children, sometimes with reading disabilities, or kids that just want to learn how to read better and do a little math tutoring. And, uh, this is my, my office, torture chamber, as the kids call it. But, uh, it's great. My commute is, uh, about the shortest one in town. I love it. Okay, ready for a little tour of Carpinteria?
Okay.
Come on along. Here we go. Okay, uh, here we are at the entrance to Carpinteria, the, from the west end. And you can see the "Welcome to Carpinteria" sign down there. The reason I chose this particular area to start in is because it's really, uh, what happened here in this area, you might want to pan around at the, the tilt-ups, is, is one of the main reasons that I'm, got myself into politics. And, uh, I think that, you know, the buildings itself are fine. They're, uh, nice-looking for what they are. But they just don't belong here. And I think they're indicative of the kind of lack of long-range planning and vision that we seem to be facing in the city. Um, I just, you know, there's just an incompatibility here with, with the entryway to Carpinteria, particularly sitting on the marsh, which is just a, it was our most environmentally sensitive area. And has been recognized now not just as a community resource, but a statewide resource. It's going to become more and more important in the future as, uh, the visitor center on the marsh and so on develops. So... So... What you're seeing, I think, is also, careful pulling out into traffic here. The use here is just incompatible also with the residential use that is adjacent to it. And our own general plan calls for special attention to be paid to the entryways to our city. And I think, I think we really blew it at this end. When we get to the other end, I hope we'll do a better job. Anyway, this, this whole end of Carpentry Avenue is beginning to become more and more residential. I think you can see that, that as new developments come in, they're mostly condominium. And the interesting thing is this area's actually zoned visitor-serving commercial. And you can see what's happened with that zoning over here. We're looking at a, an office or a commercial building and then surrounding it as part of the same development. You have the Vista del Estero condominiums. And this came about because we're operating under old zoning. And the council that I'm on now is changing that zoning so that we don't have to play this game of putting a commercial building in front of condominiums when really what you wanna have are the residential uses. So we're waiting for Coastal Commission to tell us that that's okay. But what will happen now is that we're saying it is all right to have all residential use. We're not taking away the ability of the developer to do commercial, but we're saying if you want to, go ahead and put in all residential. And I think that's what's beginning to happen at this end of town. Carpentry Avenue, as you recall, was once the highway through town. So I suppose visitor-serving was called for, but this is not really a visitor area anymore. Also, we're across the street from one of our mobile home parks. And people, of course, are aware that we have a number of mobile home parks in Carpentry. I don't know if they are aware of the importance of, of having this reservoir of affordable housing. It is something that is very important to the city.
Does a significant portion of the population live in them?
There are a significant number of people. I think somewhere up close to around 1,000 units. And the city has traditionally been very protective of this source of affordable housing. We've protected against several lawsuits challenging our rent stabilization ordinance. And it's my sense that the, the long-range solution here is going to be to try to find a way to help the parks buy themselves out so that the residents can actually become the owners of the park. And in fact, we're working with a group of, of coach owners right now to see what could be done where the city could give some help in finding ways, 'cause there are creative ways for the residents to buy themselves out. In fact, I think we have two parks that are already in negotiations with their owners right now. So we really hope that that, they can follow through on that and have a good look with it.
Did my knee get in the way of your stick shoot?
No, we're holding up traffic, but I guess that just goes with the territory.
Yeah.
And the thing is, we're talking about planning here. The council now is interested in doing some, I guess what might be called proactive planning. There's several areas, and we're coming up on one across the street here in town that are either undeveloped. We don't have a lot of undeveloped land left, but we have several significant parcels, such as the one up here. And some areas that would be called maybe underdeveloped or that are ready to be perhaps redeveloped, such as the site here where the old car lot used to be. And our, our sense is that instead of just reacting when a developer comes in with, with his idea of what could go there, that if the city can get out front and we can get some discussion going with the community on what we'd really like to see happen, that, that will give some clue to the homeowners and the developers as to what they might come in with. And I suspect then, if they come in with something that they know the city's gonna be favorable toward, it's gonna be a lot easier process, and the city's gonna see better development.
Mm-hmm, okay, we're five and a half minutes or so in.
Okay. In fact, in this parcel right here, we have a proposal coming in right now for 40 all-affordable condominium units. And I'm delighted about it because it's one of the things Brad Stein has been calling for over the last couple of years, saying he felt that would be a good parcel for residential, moderate income or affordable income residential, and that's happening now.
Could you close your windows, son?
Yes. Okay, we're getting into a commercial area now. And it's been interesting. We've had a number of merchants down on Carpentry Avenue here say to us, well, now that, now that Linden is pretty well-finished and revitalized and upgraded, what about us? And I think that this, this area, these few blocks east and west of Linden here are probably going to receive the focus next on looking at the infrastructure, the sidewalks, the street trees, lighting and so on, and see what we can do about some upgrading here. I think that planning process will get underway shortly. Main intersection here, just about ready to cross over Linden. And then see as we, as we go across Linden and, and look down if we can get a, a shot of the, the ocean down there.
I'll put on pause.
Slowly hold up traffic and see if it's possible to get a shot and get beat that.
I think, I think maybe we saw the ocean.
I think we saw the ocean. I bring that up because every time I drive through that intersection, I, I think about Ernie Wobren. And it was one of the things he wanted most out of the revitalization project was to get those trees out of the median and be able to see the ocean when he went by. And I'm, I'm really glad that it happened. It's, I mean, we're beach town. We oughta be able to look down our main street and, and see the beach. And that sparkling blue down there is just great as you, as you peek down. Okay, we're coming up on the swimming pool. Of course, every time I go by here, I, I think about what can be done when volunteers get together and really wanna have something happen because that pool is the result of a lot of volunteer effort. And we're delighted to have it there. Makes me think that those people that are out now are working toward bringing a roller skating, a roller hockey facility in Carpentry. Can't help think that they're going to be successful in doing that. I know they're very determined, and we'd like to give them some help.
There are about five minutes left.
Okay. Going by, and we're gonna head out past City Hall here and just going through Cetis Pass Road, which I'm delighted to say the state is about ready to turn over to the city. And once that becomes a city street, we can ask our city engineer to see what he can do about making the traffic flow a little better there. Also, we're thinking about maybe putting a median in, which would make it a much safer crossing for those coming across from Shepherd Place. And I'm sure they'll be delighted to hear about that. We're gonna come up, just kinda take a quick pass of City Hall. You'll find City Hall doesn't really look any different from the outside. But I would like to say there's been a lot of changes inside since hiring the new manager, Paul Marangeli, who came in in the spring of 1991. And there's been just some tremendous changes inside of that building in just his management style of bringing a management team to the, to the staff and computerizing City Hall. Of course, his greatest achievement has been in, in rescuing our finances, which is the main assignment we gave him. And we've gone from almost a zero balance up to a good, healthy $500,000 general fund reserve, and we're delighted about it.
Should we keep rolling here?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take a big, deep breath here and get onto the Carpentry Bluffs. See, there's some activity going on out here as the driving wave is going in. People look like they're excited about it. Kind of leaving the, leaving the urban area behind here. This is, I just, I just get this wonderful feeling. Soon as I cross over here onto the Carpentry Bluffs, I begin to relax and it just, it's just a break from the normal routine of urban living. And I think that's something that we wanna try to preserve. The feeling that you get from coming out here on the bluffs.
We've got three minutes left.
Okay, we're gonna move along a little bit faster and see if we can get up to the other end. I wanna make sure we get a quick glance at the beautiful view from down there. I'm sure people have been up there, but this is just a day we can't pass up to do that. I think you're probably aware that the city has just finished up its planning for this whole bluffs area. We're gonna update even the coastal plan for it. And trying to do some planning, long-range planning for this area to bring something of benefit to the, to the community. And that's really the job of a general planner, local coastal plan. You know, it's not our job to find what can maximize profits for developers. It's our plan to find out what will maximize benefits for the community, and that's what we've been working on out here. Bringing something that will be compatible with the character of Carpentry. We're looking at kind of a small-scale resort use that will be work well with the general upgrading of this plus-two area, which has some industrial buildings that will generally or very gradually change over into a kind of appropriate campus effect. Okay, I know we're beginning to run out of time here, so we can jump to the end of, the end of the world here to, to take a quick look. We've got to get this view in. It's a beautiful day, looking up and down the coastline and, and over to the mountains. And I want you to just contrast this, where we started off at the other end of town. We don't wanna make the same mistakes at this end. This is not only the entrance to Carpentry here, but it's, it's the entrance to all of Santa Barbara County. And I think this site, you know, cries out for, cries out for vision and creativity and just something beautiful that will benefit this whole community. And I think that as a community, in fact, as the last small town on the Southern California coast, we can't afford to settle for anything less than the very best. And I think this view says it all, and, and I think that's all I have to say about it.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Larry.
Hi, I'm Ken Doniele. Ready to take a tour, a short tour of Carpentry? So where are we starting from, Ken? As you notice, we're starting with the west end of Carpentry coming in. Kind of fascinating place. You notice it's really heavily trafficked here. Well-used entrance. I kinda like talking about this place to friends because, you know, it's quickest way for them to get into our Carpentry. And if you'll notice that... As we had some friends coming in from San Francisco twice, they noticed when they came in that, got it. There's nothing here. There's no, no trees, no vegetation. Almost looks kinda desolate, like they really think we're going into an industrial complex. You know, and it really hadn't noticed until they had made the statement and started listening to some tourists and some people coming around. And they were going, we need some more trees, we need some sidewalks, maybe a nice meridian down the middle, something to complement our town, this community of ours. And we've got a beautiful town. We've spent so much time and energy into cleaning up Linden Avenue that we need something to accent it, something to draw the people here. Being one of the major entrances, as you can see, just by the traffic we were getting. I think with some help from the other groups we've got, Tree Advisory, Carpentry Valley Association, we could come up with a real beautiful plan for this area. Moving more, we've moved closer into Carp. Coming up, and we have a nice little school on the, the right-hand side. The kind of a project, never-ending project of mine and my wife, we like working with youth. And with all the problems that we have, these kids that you see are where we need to start. We need to get more of the DARE programs in here, the Macduff, keep, you know, kids off of drugs. This is where we need to work and concentrate. Some conversations I've had even with the, the older kids, the high school kids, they'd like to be, be part of the task force that we've got. I think it'd be really nice if we got a youth task force going, get some ideas from the kids. They know what's going down. They know that there's drugs in the street. They know kids are carrying guns, and they don't like it. And I think a lot of input from them would be real helpful to everyone. As you can see, the trees that we've got here, these would be kinda nice back on the Carpentry Avenue. It just kind of makes it more homey. That's what this community is all about. It's a home.
Is some kinda pine trees or birch?
These are all our pines. I don't think they're indigenous to the area, but they're really nice. They're really pretty. Sometimes messy, but they're very pretty. They act, make it really kinda warm.
Do you like the palm trees?
Palm trees? They're, they're California. We can't have an area without a palm tree. We've got some of the oldest palms in the area, palm trees here. We've had a couple dedicated. We'll take a quick right up here as we come down up onto lower part of Linden, which is gonna be the next project. And talking to some of the members of the community with a new idea that they've got rolling around about wanting to put in a restaurant over here in Parking Lot 3, which is, some people call it a white elephant. It's all in how you look at it. It'd be a good idea. They like it. We cross on the tracks, we get close to the beach, you can notice that we have this large park. It's going to be our park. I've heard a lot of ideas. We should put in barbecue pits, some nets for the kids to play. They really enjoy it. They don't like the idea of us having a parking lot here. As we get, as we turn around and we come back up, there's a place adjacent to our infamous spot, which is really a landmark in, in Carpentry. That would be more ideal. As you can see, it's large and open. There's enough parking here. We need to park. And while we're on, talking about parks, is the area we passed, you'll notice that there really isn't any green areas. We don't have a parks over here on the west side, the west end of Carpentry. It's something that's really needed. We've got all the condominiums, we've got all this, but we just don't have the parks that just lend something more to the area. And there's some areas along Carpentry Avenue on the west side and at the east end that would be perfect for parks. I think we're sorely lacking here. I'm gonna turn around and get a screen and put it off.
Okay, sure. Roll on again?
All right. As everyone knows, this area of Carpentry Community is Cetis Plaza. There's been a lot of discussion lately about bringing in businesses, we need these. This is true. But as, you see as we drive through the area, a little hard to get in for one, even with the traffic light. We're just a little overcrowded up here. I don't think residents of Carpentry in this community need to have so many shops crammed into one area. It's, almost gives it a Los Angeles look, and we're not Los Angeles. We're a nice, small community, and we like to keep it this way. We need these shops. Of course, we need all the commodities and the things that they sell, but I don't think we need to have them just so jammed into an area. As we come around, you'll notice a slew of everything, mailboxes, laundry. All of these are needed, but as you're gonna see in a moment, we're starting to turn into what some people are starting to call Restaurant Row, the fast-food heaven. And it just doesn't lend itself. This is our other major entrance for all of our people, all of our guests that come in, be they be family members or tourists. You've got McDonald's, Taco Bell trying to go in. You've got the little fast-food restaurants. Major intersection. And if, as you look at it, it's devoid of anything. It's just a bunch of buildings sticking out, very stark, very naked almost. It just doesn't give the visitor to Carpentry any idea of really what type of a community they're coming into. And a lot of people, when they come in, that's where they form their ideas. When they get off the freeway, they look and they're going, well, it's another Los Angeles. We don't need that. We want the people, when they get off the freeways, to come down to see a nice tree-lined street. Lot of flowers. It's a very pretty area. It can be beautified up very nicely. If you look off to right, we have, we have some vacancies, hopefully coming in. Notice the Taco Bell. We've got all the restaurants. It's, people have made the comments, it's, we almost look like LA. And we need to get, seriously sit down and look at this. We don't need this type of businesses crammed into one area. We need to spread them out. We need to spread them out, make them part of the deal as it is blending in with this type of community that we have. It's not advantageous with a nice school across the street. It just doesn't, it doesn't look right. So we start heading back down west, you can see, uh, first thing you see is this large street. You have the smaller buildings. Everything is kinda spread out. It, it blends in with the neighborhood. It's not unobtrusive. It's just relaxing, and this is what the community is all about. And this is what people like when they come through here, just come, when they finally get in, if they've gotten past our entrances. They need to see these. It's a beautiful area. People are always commenting once they get town, into town. They love to stay here.
I guess this one tree is especially a big tree.
The Windsor, the Torrey Pine is, that's what, that's what this community is all about, this type of, of atmosphere. And it's gorgeous, and this is, this is what we need to bring this community back to. We don't need to become another Los Angeles. We don't wanna be another Los Angeles. We've got enough of that around. If they like that, they can stay there. This Carpinteria is, a lot of people, you know, they say the city of Carpinteria, but we don't think of this as a city. We think of this as a community. And that's how we like to keep it. That's how we'd like to keep it growing, to keep it, keep it that way, as a small community for everyone.
You have anything to say about Mills Corner here?
As we, as everybody remembers, this is Mills Corner. We used to have a small pharmacy here and kinda changed it so we could, people could turn right. Uh, this is the type of thing, it's a nice little parkish atmosphere. That's what we want Carpinteria to look like. Everyone that I've talked to is tired of the Los Angeles look. They wanna bring back the community, the small community. We are, we're a beachside community. That's our selling point to the rest of the areas. That's what sells us to the tourists, and that's where we get a, a lot of our monies from, is tourists. Our avocado festival is a prime example. One of the largest-attended festivals anywhere on the coast is our avocado festival. It's famous. People come here every year, tell their friends. I kinda switch back a little bit, seeing we're heading back the same direction through the center of town.
By the way, we have about two and a half more minutes left today. Go ahead.
Uh, well, I was talking about parks. If you notice, there's a lot of vacant area here, a lot of wide open space. This is what we, we can, we could put a gorgeous parks in here, and a lot of people have wanted. You notice off on here on the right, there's talk of some construction going in here. This is a perfect area if you put a small park, very unobtrusive. This is a green belt, someplace where the neighbors and the friends can just come. Uh, we don't need this massive wrecking yard look. It's not Carpinteria. It's, we're not a used car lot area. Not Carpinteria. This is what you need, is the small little restaurants like Clementines. Been here forever and ever. That's what this community needs. We need more people who can sit, like this gentleman, sitting out in front of his store. That's Carpinteria. It's a small community, and we need to keep it that way as best as we can.
Want a break?
As you can see what's around us right now, we're at a beautiful salt marsh, which everyone wants to save. Uh, I've been, keep to, I've been talking all this time about the small community that we have and how we like to keep that atmosphere. That's what Carpinteria is, and that's what myself and many others are trying to keep, perpetuate, is the small community. That's what Carpinteria is. We're, we're not a city. We're not a big city. We're a community of people who get along of all different types, all different income groups. We've got them all here, and we seem to get along very well. We seem to blend. And with, I think it's because of the area, the type of the city we have, the community that we have. And we need to keep that foremost in our mind, and we also need to keep that foremost in the minds of our youth by working with the kids, making them aware of what's around them, making them proud of what they have, getting the children, the young teens, the adults, high school kids, they're, they're young adults. We need to get them actively involved in what's going on in the community. They have a lot to offer, and I think if we had Kids Week in Carpinteria, I think we'd want to have one massive draw for a lot of people.
Thirty seconds.
And just in closing, like, thank you, and I hope you enjoyed a little insight, my little insight to Carpinteria and the insight that has been given to me by many of the residents and visitors of Carp, of this beautiful county of Carpinteria. Thank you.
Well, in the remaining last couple of minutes, I thought I'd do my own little quick tour of City Hall for those of you who haven't been here. So on the left side here is the city clerk's office and the city manager's office. Hi, Jane.
Hi, Larry.
Hi, city clerk. And over here, our city manager, Paul Marangella. Hi, Paul. How you doing there?
Hi, Larry.
How's it going? And then over this way, some past mayors, or city managers, excuse me, and our current city council. Over here is Community Development Department, which includes Planning, Building Department, and Code Enforcement. And there's our Public Works Department, Bob Nisbet. Okay? Finance Department. Hi, John.
Hi.
How you doing there? Up this way is the city administration offices, which include personnel, finance, and human resources. Hi, Pat.
Hi.
Pat Lamir, our Human Resources Director. Here's Edna. Edna, how are you doing?
I'm fine, thank you.
Nice to see ya.
Nice to see you, too.
Hey, Bob, how's it going?
Good.
Nice to see ya. There's Ray Severin, Community Development Director. On the phone. Lot of nice photos and maps here at City Hall of Carpinteria. And, uh, this is a lovely garden there. There's a courtyard inside City Hall. This is the foyer before the council chambers. Uh, here we have some pictures of past and present city council people. And through the door here is the city council chamber. Nothing's going on right at the moment. Over here is where the audience can sit. Anybody's welcome to come to any city council, a planning commission meeting here. This is one of the two remote cameras, which are connected up to the back room where they're operated. If they're pressed at, uh, the meeting, they press it in this table here, speakers from the audience can speak from this podium. The city staff sit over here, and then the city council people sit up here. And let's, here's the other camera that's connected up to the back room. Let's take a look, see what it looks like from the viewpoint of the city council people.
I hope you've enjoyed this first hour of touring with the candidates. The second hour will have the final four candidates for Carpinteria City Council. So long. Welcome to the second hour of touring with the candidates. I'm Larry Nimmer. Each of the candidates for Carpinteria City Council were given fourteen minutes to give us their guided tour of Carpinteria. The places we visited and the topics they discussed were entirely up to the individual candidates. So buckle up as we begin the second hour of touring with the candidates.
Hi, I'm Gary Nielsen. You wanna come on in?
Okay.
This is our home. These are my kids. There's Eric and Haley, eight, seven. They're panning around my, uh, dining room kitchen. This is where I spend, uh, some of my evenings. Let's go for a drive, and I'll show you what I do with the rest of my day.
Okay.
We'll just get in the van and go for a little drive here.
Okay.
Okay, the first thing we're gonna do is we're going to take my daughter to school.
This is the route you go to school with your daughter?
This is the route. We go, we go down San Yen's here. There's some, this is a subdivision that was, uh, built after some of the other ones down in El Cairo. I believe seventy-four maybe. I don't remember where my own house was built. I would take El Cairo here. This is in, this is a, uh, well-traveled street here. There's a lot of nice homes. A lot of pride of ownership here. Some of these streets, as we go down here, uh, some of the cul-de-sacs here are, and actually, the pockets around here are some of the homes that, uh, are experiencing some overcrowding difficulties because of the houses are situated between single-family residences and seems to be, uh, occurring more, with more and more frequency here, just have to deal with, uh, on the city council as soon as we possibly can, and I think that there are some good ideas. I have some good ideas for that. Now, we're turning down here. We're gonna catch Malibu going across to... And if we, there's Jim Trotter ahead of us. This is a well-traveled spot for parents taking their kids to Canlino School every morning, and a lot of, a lot of, uh, parents pick their kids up, yeah. As we cross Linden here.
Should I keep going?
No, you can turn it off. Whoopsie daisy.
Okay, we're rolling again.
And this is where we, where we do our drop-offs.
You know, we're on the right side here?
Well, right here is where they go in school. And, uh, you'll, uh, snack time. There's another, uh, another R1 quartet down here. This is, there's some nice, really nice neighborhoods in Carpinteria, particularly. This is El Cairo Park, where Tyler's Donuts will, uh, play for the championship, hopefully again next year.
You know what sport?
Uh, softball. And, uh, we have a, we have a nice softball league in Carpinteria. It's getting more and more full of competitors, and that's what we like to see. Coffee Grinder won last year. Tyler's came in second, but we plan to...
Plan to wave a nice something?
Yeah. Now, you can turn it off.
Okay, where are we now?
We're, uh, I thought I'd bring you up to where I used to live. This is my, my old neighborhood. We just moved, uh, about six months ago, and we, I wanna, well, I guess it's been four months, so I wanted to show you where, uh, I spent the first six and a half years in Carpinteria up here. This is, uh, these are the Villa Del Mar condos on the right, and you can see this village on the left. And, uh, uh, there was a drive-by shooting occurred right there.
Right where?
We just passed it, it's over on, and, uh...
When was that?
It was, it was about, uh, six or eight months ago. Last spring. I used to live right here in, in letter E, and, uh, we were just driving home the night of that incident, and, and that's one of the reasons, that's one of the things that kinda shocked me into, uh, starting my career in public service.
And what, council person? What would you wanna do about that?
Well, I think that, uh, at that point, it was merely investigating how this could've happened, and, uh, how, how this kind of, uh, of element could've entered in. In the, uh, in the pursuit of knowledge, I, I gained a lot of information and insight about, about the, the police, and I, I've known a lot about the city since I, uh, and the workings of the city since I was, uh, started on the Chamber of Commerce when I first moved to town. I was the president in nineteen ninety, and the president of the Chamber now. We deal with the city, uh, on, on a business level. But I thought I'd, I took that certain person, and I wanted to get involved in making sure that that kind of thing never happened again. And there were some of those, um, some steps that can be taken. I won't, I won't describe them to you now because I wanna talk about where, where we're going now. I thought I'd just take you up there for a minute and show you where I used to live a while. And, uh, this is, we're coming down, uh, Carpinteria Avenue here, and, uh, this used to be my route to work, and I'm, now I'm gonna take you to, uh, my businesses to show you where I spent a great deal of my time. At daytime, I see they're putting a driving range in here. For all of you who drove past this or, or drive by this and didn't know what it was, it's a driving range for, uh, golfers to practice their, uh, driving. That's where you hit the ball longways, uh, with, with, you know, non-golfers out there. We pass City Hall here. This is City Hall every day. And this is a, this is a unique little place. I'm sure all, most carpenterians have seen this a lot, this mini, urban truck farm here, sort of. Place to describe the, or to demonstrate our rural nature. Now, we're, we're obviously going behind one of our famous tourists who are gonna, they're probably gonna go down Carpinteria Park or the State Beach Park, hopefully spend the weekend and troll around town while they're here. They'll turn in to Casillas Plaza here where my business is. This is one, Tyler's Donuts. I'm sure that if you've been in Carpinteria long, you're aware of that hangout. That's where I spend a, a great deal of time, and right across the parking lot here, go across some, some of my friends in business here. Here is Big Al Subs. Kimberly and I also own Big Al Subs. Kimberly's my wife. We've been married, uh, be ten years here. Not quite lunchtime, so we haven't got the rush there yet. And now, after, usually after lunch is over, I go pick Eric up at Main School, so we'll, be on our way off to Main School here. You can turn it off now.
Okay. Okay, we're rolling again.
We're, we're at Main School now, where my son goes to school. I drop right by here, pick him up in the afternoon after school. And this, this is sort of a, this is a very typical loop for me in the day. Get a good opportunity to, to see a good portion of town. In fact, I drive through different streets on different days just to get a perspective of what's going on. As we pass Vons here. This is where if I forgot to... This is where if I forgot to get it, I'd lucky to put Eric up from school. And I would just be pulling our... And this farmer's market is here.
We have a little over three minutes left.
Okay, maybe we should...
Should I pause that?
Well, I think we'll just go down Seventh Street a little ways here.
Okay.
Because I think Seventh Street's another good opportunity to see some neighborhood, some really... Some homeowners here that have definite pride of ownership. I think that Carpinteria, for the most part, has a real pride of ownership and pride of residents that you can see in a lot of areas. There are some, obviously, that are problem areas. And those can be dealt with in a friendly and positive manner, I'm sure. So here's Elisa School. Now, we'll just turn it off and go back home. So I wanna show you what I do after I get home. Now, we're pulling into the driveway back at home here. And I wanna take you... I wanna show you my pride of autumn here. Something to tinker with afterward. We'll go through the back gate around my backside of the house. Since the rains, I haven't had an opportunity to tinker out here much, but always nice. I wanna show you my garden.
Okay.
I have some lettuce and lots of broccoli, cauliflower, Brussels sprout, some onions, some Walla Walla sweets down here on the end. Basil plant here. This is my autumn garden here. And I have some strawberries. There might even be one here, but I don't wanna pick it because they become sort of ceremonial as they get thinner and thinner. It's... We like to do it with precision and have some ceremony involved in the last strawberry this season.
So to end up, any last thoughts?
No, I'm just glad you could take a trip around the town and see how I spend my days right here in Carpinteria. And thanks for coming with me. Hi, I'm Brad Stein, and welcome to my home. Come on in.
Okay.
This is my living room. It's also camping central for me. This is a painting by Arturo Teo of the Carpinteria Blues. Feel real fortunate. This is also another shot. These are my other two kids. These are the oldest children we have. This is Jake, and he's twelve. And this is Chelsea, and she's about, oh, just about twelve. She's eleven and a half. These were our firsts. Along with my two youngest children, Eric, who's four and a half, and Jeremy, who's two and a half.
Come on in.
I feel real fortunate. Every time I drive around town, it's like the first.
So Brad, thanks for giving us a tour. Where are we starting?
Well, Larry, you know where I thought we'd start is right down here at the beach. This seems to be Carpinteria's most famous spot and withdraws most people. The world's safest beach.
Is it really the world's safest beach?
Well, that's what the billboard says since I was a kid. And that's what I've always known it as. So I still consider it the world's safest beach. Matt Roberts, our lifeguard superintendent, you know, he could give you the exact terminology, but...
It's pretty darn safe.
Yes, it is. It's got a nice, flat, sandy bottom. And it's a good family beach. I've been here, come in here almost all my life. And this is kind of where my intro into city politics started. I was on the Citizens Advisory Board about eight years ago. And...
Could we go outside just a sec?
Certainly. Well, this is where I started in politics. I was on the Citizens Advisory Board and was put on, asked to be put on. And I'm sorry, I was appointed to the Waterfront Revitalization Committee that the previous city council organized back in the late eighties. And we were put in charge of revitalizing our downtown as well as our waterfront area. And since I was a resident down here, they thought I would be a good person to be on that. And what we came back with was pretty much what our city council, the present day city council, has implemented. I know along the way, the previous council had suggested the way to revitalize the downtown was by forming a redevelopment agency. And myself and a few others didn't think that that was quite the way to go. It's something that a redevelopment agency tends to come in and take over. And you tend to lose your small-town charm when that type of agency is involved. They believe in removing buildings and building new. And I'm just the opposite. I think that we have a lot of historic value here and a lot of real diverse architectural styles so that it doesn't look all the same shopping center type or mall type of structure. So we looked at alternatives. And the way this present council has worked, we found alternatives where we stuck to the infrastructure itself, the curbs, the gutters, the sidewalks, the landscaping, and provided incentives and working relationship with the Bank of Montecito for the private property owners to come in and get low-interest, small-business loans that they can use on their storefronts and be responsible for their own property and upgrading. And as you can see, when I took office, a lot of the downtown, there were vacant storefronts, a lot of thrift stores. It just looked a little dirty and a little rundown. And so we've, over the last few years, upgraded it. And there, almost every store is full now. Most of the thrift stores have moved out. And we've got a lot of new activity coming in. And from what I hear from a lot of the merchants downtown, they've told me that this summer, business has never been better. So I'm really proud of that accomplishment. And, you know, it sparked a new life. But I'm not the only one that was involved in that. I have to give credit to Donna Jordan and Mike Ledbetter and the rest of the city council for supporting that, as well as a lot of other people that donated their time. Carpinteria Beautiful was a big group, the PBIA with Fran Puccinelli and others. They were instrumental in making the downtown turn out the way it was. So, like I say, this wasn't one person's effort. I don't wanna give that impression. This was a lot of people working hard together to make this come true. So we just finished the Avocado Festival yesterday, and it seemed to be a pretty big success.
Shall we drive down the downtown area?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. So what are we listening to, Brad?
Larry, this is the Kershua Band from Peru. And they had played at the Avocado Festival that we had both yesterday and Saturday and also last year. And I really loved their music. And I picked a tape up last year. Unfortunately, I didn't get one yesterday. I was a little preoccupied. But I really enjoy their music.
Okay, good.
So we'll be listening a little to this. This is our downtown area, starting at the beach and moving up. We recently just finished the last phase, sidewalks along the right-hand side. And we're undergrounding all these electric poles and wires. We put in the new lower-profile streetlights, a little less glare. We're trying to bring the scale down. And what's happened is, over the last year or two, since we've revitalized the downtown, we've had a lot more people strolling in the evenings, which was our attempt. Over here, this is my mom and dad's house. Right here, my family, we just finished remodeling that in the world-famous spot, Ted and Della. They do a great business, and I was fortunate to live across the street from them. Right here, Larry, too, this is a parking lot. One of the dreams and jobs I've been working forward on is trying to get a replica train station of what used to be built there when I was a kid. And it was a real sorry day when it was torn down. But there's a lot of enthusiasm in the community. And there are a lot of folks who would love to see this come back. We have a couple of developers that are still interested in producing something. And I think as the economy gets better, I feel real positive that something can happen here. It wouldn't take up the entire parking lot. In fact, it's only about, not even a quarter of this parking lot would be the structure itself. And my oldest brother took a picture. Here's a picture of the original train station.
When's that from?
This is back in the early sixties.
Right in this spot here, huh?
Right in this spot here, across the way.
Thank you.
And that's what I hope to accomplish in my next term, is secure somebody to come in and build a replica of that. I think that with high-speed rail travel moving closer this way and allowing folks from the Los Angeles area who currently travel to Santa Barbara and spend their tourist dollars and then go home, I think this is an ideal opportunity for them to come forward and use this area. Come up for the day, see our world-famous beach and our beautiful downtown, and then be able to get back on the train and go home. So anyway, I'll continue down the...
Did you used to play on the railroad tracks as a kid?
Yes, I did. And as a fact... As a matter of fact, Larry, my oldest brother who took this is an engineer for Southern Pacific Railroad, and I am currently a brakeman for the same company. So I really enjoyed it. This house over here belonged to Marcus Cravens.
On the right side?
On the right side, one of the original families in the valley. And his widow recently passed away, but the family's gonna keep it the way it is. And this is one of the remodels that I was talking about where the loan program has worked very successfully. We've got a lot of upgrading here. As I say, the main objective was to make this more pedestrian-oriented. And by allowing beaches, or benches, I'm sorry, and trees, places to sit and come and walk, it's been really well-used and well-received. I've gotten more compliments about this. And it's funny, 'cause people know something happened here that haven't been here for a while, they couldn't put their finger on it, but it feels real good. And this is one of the highlights, the Plaza, the local gathering spots. We had some great bands this weekend playing here, great local bands.
How did the Plaza come about?
Plaza, we were very fortunate. We had Bonds contribute a considerable amount of money, fifty thousand dollars. And Ralph and Betty Brown contributed the land. They own the land that Bonds sits on, and they were instrumental in providing that and getting Bonds to contribute as well. And one thing I might add, Larry, that most people might not realize is, all of this revitalization that you see that the city has been working on over the last three and four years, there has been no money borrowed, no increases in taxes. And this is all done through Measure D, which is a quarter-cent sales tax approved by the voters in 1988, as well as gasoline tax that you pay at the pump. And the monies that were collected all have to be used in street improvements only. They cannot be used anywhere else. So a lot of the money that was used here on Linden Avenue, the previous council had designated for widening Villarreal out to Fadera Lane. And we thought that the money could be better spent revitalizing our streets down here. So we just changed the name of the streets and brought it back down here and used it here as a way to upgrade our downtown and try and increase the sales tax, which it has done. Since the beginning, sales taxes gradually increased downtown here where it was deteriorating. We'll proceed on a little.
Want me to keep the camera rolling?
Uh, yeah, I think so. I think all the downtown should be seen. All the shops are really quite diverse. Everybody does really a very good business. There's Fran's shop, there's the shoe store, Jim Brooks. He does a... He's one of the only people that can fit shoes on my feet, and I've got some pretty odd-shaped feet. So this is Mills Corner, which again, Measure D funds, which were road tax funds, were used for the purchase and the rejuvenation of this. As most people remember, the corner went all the way out, and it was very difficult and dangerous to turn right on that for school buses and pedestrians standing on that corner. And the building itself, we got it for a fairly good price because it needed a lot of earthquake retrofit. And again, Measure D funds were used and gasoline tax monies were used because that was considered a road improvement.
So we have about a minute and a half more?
All right.
Going down Carpath.
Here again, I would like to see the downtown T expand and come this way as well. You can see again, the Loan Phone Bar. They have done an incredible job with landscaping and beautifying that spot. Our library is about to be rebuilt. I can see there's some more work to be done down here and just drawing more people into town and feeling good about it. This is a terrific community. A lot of people work hard and got it together. You feel the spirit is here, and it's really moving forward. Over here on the left, we've got Donnie Campbell, who's taken just a vacant lot in a rundown building and turned it into a local farm, which is really a great plus. He's a good farmer, and this is where we usually get our pumpkins from. Bring the boys. And on the right here is an area that I would like to see approached with Chevron.
Brad is our last stop. Where are we now?
Well, Larry, we're here at the corner of Dump Road and Carpinteria Avenue. And this is a property owned by Chevron Oil. One of the things that we've concentrated on over the last couple of years are youth programs. We've hired a community service director, Daniel Hernandez, who's brought in a lot of youth programs that we haven't had here locally. And one of the main thrusts I see happening is a roller hockey site. And to me, Chevron, we talked to about a year ago about this. And at first, they were enthusiastic, but in the last few months, they've pulled back. So we're looking at other sites. But I would like to continue. And I think with the support of the community, we could pick up this site. It would be ideal. It's close for all the kids to come to and reach either by bike or walking. And I think it'd be a real asset to the community.
Okay, well, thanks a lot, Brad.
And thank you all for listening.
Okay, see you later.
Bye.
Hi, I'm Rob Godfrey. Would you like to come in?
Okay, thanks, Rob.
Come on in.
See where you live here.
We're here at number 201 on Eugenia Place, 1090 Eugenia. For people who don't know Eugenia Place, there are actually people living on Eugenia. Mostly Godfrey's and a couple of buildings that are mixed-use buildings. We've got three-quarters of this building is commercial offices. And then my wife and I, Fran, live up here in this quarter of the building, which is about 2,000 square feet. Even though we're living in the same place as our business, which is downstairs, when we get up here, it really is away from the business.
So you've got your games there, and you've got your...
The rappers at television. If there's anything I do do, it's watch television.
Okay. Looks like you also do some reading.
Oh, there's business reading, there's player reading, there's political reading, there's stuff I'd hope to read. Why don't you come on in? Let's go for a ride.
Okay.
You know, one of the streets in Carpinteria, that is the Lost Street, is Eugenia Place. I can remember people going into the 76 station across the street when it was owned by Riztons and asking where Eugenia was. And the people on the station wouldn't know. Eugenia is right alongside Linden, and basically is home to an office complex that was largely designed by Frank Serena and his people. These buildings here were done by Scott Ellenwood. And it's a really nice place to work. Fran and I think it's a nice place to live. Certainly quiet enough on the weekends. I've always believed it's neat if you can kind of live and work and be in the downtown area.
This is your building on the left here?
Yeah, this is ours on the left, kind of hidden by the growth of trees here. It's about seven years old. Interestingly, when we first came... It's about seven years old. Interestingly, when we first came to Carpinteria, we were in this cream-colored building. My parents put up in nineteen seventy-three. Ironically, because the county of Santa Barbara messed up on a, a building application we had out in Galita. And at the very last minute, county council told us that we couldn't build a mixed-use building in Galita. That was only suitable for Los Alamos or Los Alitos. That's how we ended up in Carpinteria.
Ooh.
I think that's ironic, especially when you hear some of that goof-ups. Those do happen from time to time at City Hall. We ended up here because of a goof-up at the county. You know, I don't have any kids and probably one of the, the major things I like to do is I like to look at cities. I'm an urban person. If, if you ever saw a picture of me hiking out on the Edison Trail, that would have to be a figment of somebody's imagination. My idea of relaxation is probably watching C-SPAN and reading over political books and things like that. What I thought we'd do is take a trip down Carpinteria Avenue because there's a lot of history down here. I think this, uh, the Medical Foundation Building here on the right is really one of the good buildings here in town. Okay, we're here at San Andres and Carpinteria Avenue. We're going into an area of town that for probably the past, oh, ten or fifteen years has been a tough area to plan for a city. It's, it's an area that's had commercial zoning, it's had residential zoning. And it seems like no matter what you try to do in this area of town, somebody's gonna have a problem with what you decide. Now, these apartments here, those were done many years ago, but it's good form of rental housing. We've got an older section of town here on the right, between the road area. And then as we go further down the forty-four hundred block here, we start getting into a mix of, of building types. We've got a mobile home park here on the right. And as we go down, we'll approach a set of condos and then some more industrial space. Most of the land down here has historically been zoned commercial. And that's the type of zoning the property owners haven't wanted to give up. But from a city standpoint, we've tended to feel that it's not best, safer retail commercial. We'd like that to stay downtown. And it's been a point of some interesting decisions we've made over the years, especially these tilt-up buildings that you see down here. These were some real problem areas as far as what to do from a planning perspective. No matter what you chose, if you chose housing to go down here, there would be some complaints. We didn't want retail commercial down here. But what we knew we wanted and we needed room for were some small businesses who might have been operating out of their homes, maybe their manufacturers, reps, carpet installers. Light industrial use is where they just needed a, a small office and some warehouse space. That's the reason for these buildings. Could we have done better on some of the design? Maybe. Probably could have done a little more landscaping. But they serve a purpose. And if it's not those buildings, it, it might have been something else in the form of housing. People I know would hope for maybe plots like that next to the slough to be open space. But unless they're in public ownership, that's, that's a really hard thing to do. This is coming into basically the more traditional view of Carpinteria from maybe ten or fifteen years ago. This is Old Town. Delgado's Restaurant here, some of the old single-family houses. This, uh, place to the right, the condominiums here, it's an interesting history. This area, which is to the west of Eliso School, used to be the site of the Santa Barbara Lemon Association Labor Camp. All of the migrant workers that used to come in to help pick lemons had housing provided for them on this site. And as the need for those type of workers diminished, the need for the housing diminished. And so, maybe ten years ago, there were plans drawn up to rehabilitate that farmworker housing site into the condos you see here. So, it's a, it was an interesting proposition. We've had a number of sites along Carpinteria Avenue where we've had really substandard housing, stuff that went back to the twenties, even with dirt floors, that has been removed and replaced with some good affordable housing. And we even see that up by Clementines. You know, when we talk about replacement housing, this building here across from what we call the Auto Center, this frame-type building was an interesting building because it also replaced some substandard housing. And this was originally intended for use by senior citizens. And the market conditions were such that there didn't seem to be enough seniors. And so, they've opened it up to basically affordable housing. This was managed by the community, the Housing Corporation of Santa Barbara, which is a nonprofit agency. So, it was an interesting way to take some really substandard housing. I think a bar was associated with it also and make it into something of use to people. And that's what I think is really neat about Carpinteria. We can do those things sometimes. You just have to let people have a chance and sometime give them a little bit of leeway in the process. Thought what we do now is maybe take a, a little trip out the bluffs. And we can see a part of Carpinteria that first was home to Fran and I when we moved to Carpinteria in nineteen seventy-three. Okay, we're continuing out on Carpinteria Avenue, doing what I think so many people do in town, and that's cruise. Coming by City Hall here. You know, this used to be a company headquarters for Chevron in this area. And then they made the city a deal a few years ago.
The City Hall was?
Yes. Coming past the bluffs here. You know, as I pass City Hall, we have to, I think sometimes remember why Carpinteria became a city. That was for three main things. That was police, public works, and city planning. I call them the three Ps. Every once in a while, you hear people talk about, do we really need to be a city anymore? And we do have police, we do have planning, we do have public works, plus a number of other services. And that makes us a lot different, I think, than if we were in the county. It's tough working with county government. I would much rather work with some people at City Hall and some council members down here. Thought I'd like to just maybe turn in here on Bayard and just take a, a look at the ocean views here that you see from the end of Bayard. It's what a lot of people like about this area. And, and I hope a lot of those views don't change over the years. In fact, most people feel that way.
Do you keep rolling?
We turn. What I thought we'd do is just take a, a quick run through the, past the industrial park because I think that's important to our area. And we'll talk about the industrial park when we get out there.
We're ten and three quarter minutes in.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, we're rolling, Rob?
Yeah, we're now on the east end of town here, out by the industrial park. If you were to look over to the right, this ag area over here that we're looking at, it's an area that we used to call Parsons Air Park. There's actually a, an airfield down there, an airstrip.
Operational still?
Not, not anymore. No. No, there's no aircraft down there. There's still some hangars used for ag businesses, but it's an interesting part of Carpinteria. When the freeway came through in the late sixties, the area, the industrial area you see to the right got filled in. And during the sixties, seventies, and middle part of the eighties, we started to see some industrial growth here in Carpinteria. We were home to Sambo's Restaurants. And in fact, we're coming up on a building here at the corner of Mark and Via Real, which is now the Salvation Army's rehab headquarters here. This was at one time the headquarters for Sambo's Restaurants. And if you'd been on the planning commission twelve years ago, when the conditional use permit came in for the Salvation ARC, you would have thought that the whole town was gonna fall apart if we had a drug and alcohol rehab center here in town. I'm happy to say the town hasn't fallen apart and we're still okay. Well, this is where it all started, out here by Bayard Avenue. In the back, if you were to take a look, we've got a bunch of units from Casitas Village. I was a college graduate in nineteen seventy-three, getting out of Berkeley. And fortunately, we were able to pick up a condo at seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, two thousand dollars down and a hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. That was thanks to some city councils and planning commissions from the late sixties and early seventies. Tom Lewis was one of them, John Fukasawa. I feel they gave me my break in Carpinteria. I think probably during the eighties, we lost touch a little bit on some of our housing opportunities. We didn't have hardly any affordable housing built, no mobile home parks constructed. We focused on a lot of high-end housing, a lot of fifteen-hundred, eighteen-hundred square-foot condos. And they're really certainly nice. What I hope we can do in the future is maybe simplify some of our construction, make it so that a tract home isn't an unusual situation anymore. So, I really enjoy Carpinteria. I enjoy working with the people here. And, and I hope we're gonna have some good prosperous times in the future.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Rob.
Hi, I'm Bob Needham. And I'm gonna take an opportunity today to show you around town on a bicycle. Before I do that, though, I'd like to show off my T-shirt, Carpinteria Pool, one of our great facilities in town. And encourage everybody to use the pool, support it generously with their time and money. And let's keep this facility alive and healthy. So, let's head off to the garage and the bicycle's waiting us. As you can see, this is where I variously take my bikes apart and put them back together. In addition to swimming a lot, I enjoy bicycling around town. And that's pretty much why I wanted to take you folks today on a bike ride. It's, uh, it's the way I enjoy seeing the town. And I think you get a chance to see things you would never see otherwise. I'd like to say, thank Susan and Tyler Dump for lending us their burly tandem. Hopefully all of you can fit on the back. It's, uh, it's not that big a seat, but...
Uh, there should be room for all of them with me, I think.
Okay. Well, and hopefully you'll handle it okay, Larry, if you, you let me know. I think I'm gonna have to change my shirt real quickly. I don't wanna mess up my nice Carpinteria Pool shirt. Then we'll be heading out to a very special place.
Okay.
Well, here we are down at the beach. Picked this location to start our trip to see all of Carpinteria. I think the beach is the focus of this town. It's focused for a lot of the activity and it's what the town is famous for. So, I thought we'd go ahead and begin here on the sand, here on the state campground where it meets the, the city property. And let's go take a look at Carpinteria.
Hey, you sure I can handle the tandem bike here, Mom?
Well, you did pretty good on the way down from the house. And I'm hoping you'll continue in the good luck. So, if you have any problems, just give a yell and I'll dump you off the back. Well, as you can see here on the right, they say campground. Right now, you still can't get into the campground parking lot from downtown Carpinteria. But I think we're all looking forward to that changing soon. I think it'll bring people back into the downtown area. And I think more people will use the beach. So, we're all excited about that. The next thing that's going on here is this open field, which is been underutilized as a recreational amenity, is now going through, I think, a cooperative effort of both the state and, and the city to go ahead and make this much more usable by both the campers and, and the people here in town. They'll be planting some grass and have some sports fields out here. I think that's great. As you can see also, we're getting into the new area where we've gotten some new street lights and, and some new plantings here in town. It's all part of the downtown upgrading that's been going on over the last few years. And it's turned Carpinteria into a very, very special downtown area. It's got its own unique charm. We didn't try to mimic some other town here on the central coast. A big building here on the right is Killavack. One of the things we're doing now is looking at this, this piece of property all the way down to Palm Avenue is maybe some, an area which will be changing over the, over the future. Killavack's a great neighbor. We would like to keep him in town. But ultimately, we'd like to see this into visitor-serving commercial. And we see a lot of new businesses coming in all the time. My understanding is this is gonna be now a bed, bed and breakfast here on town. We're looking forward to having that as well. We lose some businesses over time. Ulilabrent's welding, hopefully that will stay in some form or another. Hey! And it has a little charm to it and a special history that's very important, I think, to a lot of people here.
Yeah, I'm doing okay so far, Bob?
Hanging in there.
You're doing good.
Now, the Palm's on the left. Kind of a quiet Sunday afternoon for the Palm. Still a crowd outside. And you can see the downtown is just a very pleasant place to be. And I think after the avocado festival, a lot of people go home telling stories about what's been done here. This is my favorite block. It used to be the block I hated the most in downtown. And now we have this wonderful seal sculpture, which is so uniquely Carpinteria. It's just a, it's a great place. Attracts a lot of people. And again, it's just one more step into Carpinteria's future. You see a lot of the, the businesses are now open visually where the old planting and, and architectural structure along the street was blocked out. Maybe the most significant thing is that people now from the intersection here at Carpinteria Avenue can actually see the ocean. Looks like we'll have to stop. We got a red light here.
The light is on three minutes so far.
Okay.
Especially on Palm.
Yeah.
Okay, Bob, anytime.
Well, Larry, you're doing pretty good up this hill. Off to the right, you see Casitas Pass up there and Rincon Mountain. It's a real visible feature. Reminds us all how small this valley really is. And straight ahead, you can see one of the best views that I know of, and that is the mountains above Carpinteria. Again, it's, it's one of the major limiting features. As a planning commissioner, we're always trying to look out what the future of the town may be. And we're given some very significant geographical constraints, the ocean and the mountains directly in front of us. It's a beautiful evening. And I think we should coast down and have a little fun on this ride. Here's a piece of unutilized property. And we hope someday we'll get some housing in that location, lower and affordable housing. I think it's a great place for it. Close to downtown and people can walk on down and use the businesses down there. So, we're coming to the end of Linden. And you can see, there are greenhouses straight ahead. They're becoming a, a bigger and bigger feature here in the valley. And it's created some significant effects, some good and some not-so-good. And now we're turning down El Carol. Now, this is a hub of activity in the early mornings and the afternoons with the kids and the parents dropping them off. That's a great place. You can see that paralleling Foothill and really the last street within the city. Wonderful, quiet neighborhood, beautiful sunny Sunday evening. We're heading on down to El Carol Park, one of my favorite places. And we got ballfields there, big open soccer field, as well as girls' ink on the far end.
Are there exercise, do you bike?
Yeah, actually, I love biking around the town. I think it's, this town is so small, I think you get to see things and you see people. When you bicycle around, you just don't see in a car. And it's too big, I think, to walk from end to end every day. So, I, bicycling's a nice, a nice compromise. So, some nice little quiet cul-de-sacs.
There's a park on the left.
And we'll turn in here just for a little spin around the, so watch the bump. Here we go, Larry. And I'll slow down for you. Can see, you know, our families often have picnics here, both on Saturday and Sunday evenings. Just a wonderful, pretty evening. And you would pan across the ballfield. There's- There's Girl Link. What a beautiful view. You can see, even on a Sunday, the parking lot is nearly full. We need more parks like this in this town. El Carol has a, a kind of warmth to it, a kind of a welcomeness to it, brings families in, and I think that's the kind of parks we like to have. You know, activities both for the athletic and the ball fields, but there's also those places like the, the new playground equipment that just went into El Carol, and the picnic benches for the families to have their picnics. Just a wonderful evening. So, we're heading down through El Carol. I live quite near here, just a couple blocks over. It's probably why El Carol's my favorite park. You can see these houses, well-kept up. It's, I think the pride of people in Carpinteria and the homes that they own is, is just, it's something worth noting. Everybody's just a little different front yard. Everybody likes to just display a little pride and a little uniqueness about how they like to keep their home out front. We hope that while there may be some development in the valley and some housing, that we'll be able to retain some of the natural agricultural open green space area to be productive for many years to come, producing lemons and avocados.
Any thoughts about what can be done about buying that house?
Well, I think we have to find a place for the workers, if the workers are present here in this town, but it has to be built on affordable land. It's gonna, if we're gonna be able to put a house up, and it'll be safe and maintained in a healthy manner, it's gonna be on less expensive land than, than we seem to be looking at these days. I, I really would hope to developers would come forward with some kind of solution to the problem, and maybe even the growers who have brought these people to our town, show some heart and, and help these people have a, have a life and a safe place to raise their families.
We're on Casitas Pass now?
Yeah. We're coming up to a piece of property. We're seeing some new building over here. Have to look into the sun, but you'll see a, a large, single-family house going up there. There were some earlier plans to put up a, a large, large number of houses that would seem inappropriate. Beautiful mountain view behind you if you can catch that. And there's the Vice Mayor's House, Brad Stein. And you can see, there's still so much of the avocados left in this area, this piece of property, which will probably go to housing as well, and then the orchids to the far left. And we're moving now strictly into more of the residential area, approaching the freeway. I think many people who use this street appreciate it. It's been laid out very nicely, very wide, but it bottlenecked up here at the freeway, and many of us get, spend a lot of time at those stop signs, and hopefully, something can be done about that. I know it's a frustration for a lot of my neighbors. So, we'll be going up here and encountering the other major geographical limitation of this town, and that is the freeway. Just as much as the ocean and the mountains, the freeway that runs through this town defines certain limits, denies access to certain parts of town, and it opens up others. The plaza here on the right, where it's been recently proposed as a Taco Bell, would be allowed to come forward, and I know the development fees have been an important issue. It was recently put to a vote by the city council, but we'd like to see all the new businesses carry the burden of the impacts that the, the business brings to town. And we're turning left here. And the middle school. And then our Masonic Temple and the post office, which now has two zip codes. We're very proud of that.
Do you?
Yes. It's, the post office boxes are 93014. So, the town is growing, and sometimes it's, it happens slowly, sometimes it happens fast.
Okay, we're ten and a half minutes in.
And we're approaching the Carpinteria Creek. It's a, a beautiful little area in the town, and a lot of people have really put their own personal time, energy into restoring it and returning it to some of its natural beauty. I think it's a great asset to the community, and the people should be applauded. We'll slow down a little so you can get a look at it. Last time I was here, there was even some water trickling through there. Just beautiful. Remembering we live in a semi-arid environment, see all those trees. And so, I guess it's gonna be a little bit up the road now, so maybe we wanna just turn it off.
Okay.
This is something that's really exciting to town. It's a new driving range here on the property owned by Mr. Brown and Serena. As a planning commissioner, we were thrilled to see this come before us and really hope it'll work out well. I know they're only on a two-year lease with the property owners, but we hope this to be a success and provide recreation for everybody in town, and maybe even develop a golf team in the high school. So, Larry, here we are at the end of the ride. I hope you enjoyed it. I, I could tell by the squealing along the roads of Carpinteria, there was a lot going on and I couldn't see. I guess why I wanted to bring everybody here today was, because this is where I started in Carpinteria, here in the condos across the way, and it has a spectacular view of the entire valley lays out before you, and it shows both, I think, what, what exists of Carpinteria and the good, and also it shows the hope for the future. There's so much, so much good yet in Carpinteria's future, and I think as we look behind us, we see the bluffs. It's been a big issue for, for the whole town over many years, and we hope that in the near future, this'll be someplace we'll all be proud of. It'll be a part of Carpinteria's new future, which I think holds a great deal for both us and, and our children. So, beginning on the ocean, here we are. We'll finish this evening.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Bye-bye.
I hope you've enjoyed this opportunity of touring with the candidates. We'll see you at the voting booth.